Good evening, everyone. It is six o'clock on Wednesday, July 17th, and welcome to the regular work session of the McMinnville City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Before we start on the work session this evening, I do want to share, if folks don't know yet, former Mayor Rick Olson has passed away. We will be honoring him next Tuesday night at the regular council session here. And additionally, if you'll do me a favor, if we could just take a moment of silence to acknowledge his incredible service to the city of McMinnville and the county as well, as well as McMinnville Water and Light, I would appreciate it. Thank you. We do have a work session this evening, long-range planning work plan. So we have members of our Planning Department and Community Development Department here, including our Community Development Director Heather Richards, and I will turn the mic over to her to lead us through the evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and councilors. This is a work session that, as requested by City Council, to go over our long-range planning work plan, how we got to the work plan itself, the different programs and projects that we want to implement over the next several years, some nuances associated with those projects, and to answer any questions that you have. I wanted to introduce Taylor Graybill. He's our new senior planner. He's with us tonight as well. And you'll notice when I go through this that we have a fairly ambitious work program. And so our other planners are either busy doing that right now or taking some much-needed time this evening. So I use this, I do a lot of presentations around the community and the state about planning, and I use this image for that because, to me, it represents what long-range planning actually is, which is putting together all the pieces of a puzzle to build a community. And it's many of us who are putting those pieces of the puzzle together. Each piece represents different aspects of the community itself, and our long-range plans are representing those different aspects.
I'm sorry, one second. It's unclear if the folks on Zoom can hear what's happening or not. Sal was having an issue. Good now? Okay. Sorry to interrupt. Okay. And councillor, great. Everybody's great. Thank you.
They're all chiming in. So just to start, to let you know, the Community Development Department, the Community Development Department has six programs in it. It has planning, it has urban renewal, building, the co-compliance program, special projects, and affordable housing. Planning is one of them. It's a division. Buildings is a division as well. And they're all supported by different teams, but work closely with each other. The Planning Division is comprised of three components: current planning, long-range planning, and citizen involvement. The Planning Commission and the Planning Division of the city are considered our citizen involvement program per Oregon land use goals. And so tonight, we're going to talk about the long-range planning program. To let you know about staffing for it, since we are, we run pretty lean and mean as a planning division. And so with that, we don't have enough staff to sort of dedicate into specialties. So some communities you'll see planning will be divided in a current planning division and a long-range planning division. Here at the city of McMinnville, all of our planners participate in both current planning and long-range planning. There's pros and cons associated with that. To me, the pros are that the planners get to do a variety of things and aren't just sort of niched into one thing. And as they're working through the current planning, which is reviewing development and applications against our sort of long-range planning goals and zoning ordinance, through that work, they also recognize where the needs are in terms of our long-range planning and vice versa. So smaller communities like McMinnville, where you have the opportunity to participate in all those different elements, it really gives you the full breadth of a planning program. But with that, we don't have dedicated specialties, nor do we have redundancy, really. But you'll see here, we, many years ago, I worked with Finance to divide our planning program into separate sub-funds, and then really worked on sort of isolating what people were doing and how much they were doing of it because we went through that current planning fee study. And we're looking for full cost recovery for current planning, so we need to understand how much work was being put into that. And so we closely monitor this assignment of FTEs into the three different components. Most of our planners are working half and half in current planning and long-range planning. I see committee support as part of the long-range planning program. And our committee supporters, we support six different city-appointed committees here at the city of McMinnville, as well as several project advisory committees that are meeting on projects. We have an associate housing planner. The associate housing planner, only 25% of that FTE's time is assigned into the long-range planning. The rest of that planner's time is assigned into our affordable housing program, which is developing programs and projects through our construction excise tax fund. And then our, let's see, oh, me, as the Community Development Director, I'm a little less than half-time into planning. I also have 25% of my time into urban renewal and 25% of my time into supporting the building division. So how do we develop work plans? I gave you a staff report, so I walked through the history of this. But when I was hired, I was hired by Martha Meeker in August of 2016. And when I was hired, the first thing she said to me is, "I'd like you to do an assessment of the planning program." She recognized that it was, it had been, it had gone through a lot of reductions during the Great Recession. It was under-resourced. It was behind on plans. And she really wanted to understand what needed to take place for the planning program to get caught up and serve the community. So she said, "Just take six months and do an assessment as to where the planning program is and where you think it needs to go." And so, given that time, the opportunity that time, it allowed me to really look at the plans in McMinnville, what had been done, what hadn't been done, what's required by the state, what's required by the federal government, and what is really sort of proactive planning for a community to do, especially a community like McMinnville that really prides itself on its small-town charm, and how do you protect that? And I went through that. I identified what wasn't updated, how far behind some programs were, and then we sort of prioritized it. We assigned FTE support to it, and we assigned hard dollars to it. And that sort of created this overall assessment program. We've been using that ever since. And based on the priority structure, have sort of developed these three- to five-year work programs with the Planning Commission and Planning Staff. Most planning products and programs are going to take more than one year to actually initiate and adopt. And so they're spanning over a couple of different fiscal years. And so we've been working on this three-to-five-year work program. It informs our budget. It informs our staff work plans as well. And it informs our Planning Commission workload beyond their current planning work. The numbers that I originally put in terms of the cash need for these projects have changed over time. I really underestimated originally. As we've gone out to bid on some of these things, I've adjusted them over time. But other than that, we pretty much have held firm with it. The blue, and every year, we look at this with the Planning Commission. So blue, highlighted blue items mean we've done it. Highlighted yellow items mean that it is in the next year's work program to be done. And then green items are underway. Then I have an internal document that I use to go a little bit further because I'm making recommendations on what the priorities are. And this internal document brings in a couple of additional decision-making filters. One is, is the planning product or program in the MacTown Strategic Plan? In the MacTown Strategic Plan that was adopted in 2018, there is a lot of long-range planning objectives and actions in there. So that is part of our work program. Is it a statutory mandate per state law? And if it is, is there actual embedded deadline in the state law for that project or program? Does it advance our housing goals? Does it advance our growth and development character goals? And does it advance our economic development goals? I also try to think about when we're going to be able to implement these programs and projects. So what's the timeframe for it? Who's going to be assigned to it? How much of their FTE is going to be assigned to it? So that I can make sure I'm helping manage staff workload as well in terms of when these projects are brought online. And then looking at the funding for them. So we are typically trying to fund these projects and programs with supplemental grants. Most times, we cannot get grants for the whole project. We typically never get grants for staff capacity, so to pay back the city for staff time. But we are able to access grants to help offset the costs of the consulting costs associated with the project or program. So I usually am working through that as well. So we have, since 2017, worked with this type of work program, which identifies the long-range plans that need to be done, the comprehensive plan amendments associated with those plans that need to be done, and then the zoning ordinance amendments. And when we think that they need to be done within the overall work program, based on those priorities I described to you before. And these shift over time. And I'll talk a little bit about how they shift and why they shift. But we use this to sort of start lining up the next couple of years of work for our work program. Then, I work with staff, and we start assigning staff to the different products. And the staff starts putting together, in fact, this is Taylor's timeframe, but the staff starts calendaring out the projects. Because most of what we do in planning has decision-making milestones that are required by state law. And so we're working, and it's a fairly litigious environment, especially here in McMinnville. So we're working under, you know, constant pressure for deadlines. And oftentimes, you will see things remanded back to cities based on process, which adds time and cost to these programs. And so I'm doing everything I can to make sure that's not the reason things are getting remanded back to us is because of process. So we're trying to schedule in all the deadlines and manage those as much as we can. So that leads us to what you have here tonight, which is sort of the long-range planning work plan over the next two years. I visited with Jeff about, you know, what we thought you would probably want to hear about. And from that, we thought about, you know, what's coming, what's in the pipeline that's coming to you? And when is it coming to you? And then what does it mean in terms of responding to both of the mandates we have in front of us, but also the need in this community in terms of setting the foundation with our planning? So that's what this chart is meant to do. The populated timeframes, you'll notice that each column is a quarter, so three months. And each of the populated timeframes for public hearings, work sessions, and adoptions, some of them are already noticed. The ones that are near-term are already noticed, so we have those lined up already. The ones that are longer projects, over the two-and-a-half years, we're doing our best guess. So this can change, this timeframe in terms of when they're coming to you. What I want to point out to you, though, is those bigger projects, we try to have a work session with the Planning Commission on everything we're doing before we bring it in for public hearing. Anything that I think is going to be impactful in terms of policy changes or sort of the bigger, high-profile projects, we're also bringing into you as a work session to sort of say, "This is where we're at. Are we on track?" Get some direction for you, from you, as we continue to move it forward. Some of the larger planning programs, like the Transportation System Plan update, we'll probably bring into you as a work session a couple of times over the two years that we're working on that, to just say, "We're at this point. This is what we've talked about thus far, what we've heard from the community. These are our next steps. Are we on track?" Just to make sure that we are informing you the best way that we can in terms of these programs and projects, and also get direction from you as needed. I also have on this plan, and I've divided this up, and I've divided my staff report up this way and also this presentation, into sort of the four buckets that I see happening right now in our planning work program. And I want to start off by saying, this isn't what I would desire as a planning work program. Just to put it on the record, I often have people say that to me. Is this, you know, this is Heather's planning work? No, this is not. This is responding to what we're required to do. If somebody asked me what my wish list was, it would be different than this. But this, we set this up in such a way where we have state-mandated housing planning that's in front of us. We've also have state and local mandated growth planning based on that UGB amendment that we did in 2020 that was acknowledged in 2021. We're not done with that work. We still have a bunch of stuff we're supposed to be doing for that. We also have what I call specialty planning. So this is the stuff that's unique to McMinnville. This is where McMinnville can be strategic and really get in front and have discussions about what they want to see happen in this community proactively. This is the type of planning that I would like to see expanded much more because this is really how you steer your own ship. I have in here the specialty planning that's unique to McMinnville based on what we have. We have three, four projects in here. This is based on priorities that I showed you, the MacTown Strategic Plan and those goals that we're trying to advance forward, funding resources that are available to support them as well. So this is a smaller list than I would like to see here. And then we also have code amendments that are either required by state law or are directed by the Planning Commissioner or City Council. So we have a list of different code amendments associated with that. Our code is from 1981. It's, what is that now? That's probably older than you, Taylor, right? I'm assuming. That's 43 years old, right? 44 years old? That's a pretty old code.
It's 43.
I wonder why you'd know that.
That's a pretty old code. So, you know, love to go in there and update the whole code if we can. But we don't have the staff resources and capacity to do that, so we're peeling off little bits as we go. Why, is 1981 an important date for you? Is that why you guys are all laughing up there?
Yeah, that's why we're laughing. And your emphasis of "that's a pretty old code." Right after really clarifying that I was very in touch with exactly the number of years that that would be ago.
Well, if you're mentally in a constant state of being 36 years old, like I am, anyways, all right. So this is our best guess, right? And this is our ideal strategy. And then there's disruptors. And we just lived through all these disruptors in the last couple of years. So the work program I'm going to walk you through is a pipeline of clogged projects and programs we started years ago, or things that we should have been doing years ago. But they've been clogged up because of these disruptors. So the disruptors are new state mandates with pressing deadlines, which is happening every year right now at the legislative sessions. I think, you know, the state feels that we can respond to our housing crisis with paralysis by analysis. And it's, to me, I'd like to just see us start moving forward with actual outcomes. But anyways, we're doing lots of analysis.
So can you just, will you talk about, or not necessarily talk about them, but just name some of those? I mean, I know the severely rent-burdened analysis, or that, and that demands a public process. So I know that one. I know there's a few others. Could you make, call them out?
The past ones, the ones that disrupted our program and shifted a lot of things aside. So, and I have it in my staff report. I might have the legislative dates wrong. But I think in 2019, House Bill 2001, the Missing Middle Housing Code, right? So based on that, it passed. And all cities over 25,000 had to do a significant amount of work. One would be bringing missing middle housing into your single-family residential zones. And how do you do that? And do it in such a way the community feels comfortable. And two, evaluating your infrastructure to see if you have the capacity to support that much of upper-density development, that is contemplated by that. So that was about a two-and-a-half-year disruptor. We then also, just a year later, or maybe the same year they adopted House Bill 2003, 2003 talked about a regional housing needs analysis, which then created all these reports that we had to submit to the state, which actually were behind on submitting those. But all these reports, we had to submit to the state so they could start collecting data for a regional housing analysis. And then it also told us that we, that's where they created the rules that states needed to now do a housing needs analysis every eight years. And those states that were the furthest behind, McMinnville, had to go first. And so that's when we were told you need to update your housing needs analysis and submit it by the end of 2023. And by the way, once you submit your housing needs analysis, another House bill passed that said, "A year after you submit your housing needs analysis, you need to submit a housing production strategy," which is a new plan for cities to do. And we'll be going through that process. So those are all sort of those types of disruptors that I would say the severely rent-burdened situation that we're in now and what we have to do that is probably a smaller disruptor. There's much larger ones that have come from the state in the last couple of years that have really sort of shifted small programs like McMinnville, where we don't have staff capacity to set aside all the other work we were doing and focus on that work.
Sal has a comment here. He says, "Paralysis by analysis," quote-unquote, "is League of Oregon Cities or the State Planning Director Association giving hard data to the governor and legislators to request a reduction in time-consuming mandated reporting?"
I don't know because I no longer have the time to participate in those groups. So I don't know if they actually are having those discussions or not. And what I just said to you is the irony. Those of us who do not have the time to participate anymore, so I used to be on the Planning Directors Association Board. I used to be, participate in the Community Development Committee for the LOC. But once these types of mandates started coming from the state, I resigned from those positions because I didn't have the time to participate anymore. And those cities that are larger and can send staff are the ones that are sitting at the tables at this point. So it's interesting dichotomy.
Thank you. Sal adds one more comment. He says, "Perhaps this can be an issue for the city's lobbyists."
Another disruptor is challenges and appeals. This is McMinnville's story. And challenges and appeals to the current work that, and then that, those challenges and appeals need to be resolved prior to advancing to the next phase of work. So an example of this is we submitted our housing needs analysis and our economic opportunity analysis. I forget when we submitted it, in February, late February. I was then asked to put together a public record index. It was about 5,000 pages or so. And then there was submitted objections to the work. I think there's a total of 14, 15, or 16. Still working on the response to the objections to get into the state, which, you know, has consumed a couple hundred hours of my time to do, to put all that together, which takes us away from doing other work.
Can I ask a quick question? I think there were several things that were in dispute as to whether we should leave them in or take them out. Are they, are those the particular items that are causing the problem? Or is there other things too?
I guess I would say the objections that went up to the state, so Mark Davis objected to the parkland need, which was consistent with his objections at the local level.
Right.
And then Friends of Yamhill County. The Friends of Yamhill County objections are similar to what they objected to at the local level. They can't bring up new issues, but it wasn't as many. But the objections are more, there's more to them.
Okay.
I answered your question. But I also think, you know, this happens, this has happened historically here at McMinnville as well. And then another disruptor is new local priorities by the City Council and Planning Commission. When we put together the work plan, it's fairly ambitious, trying to respond to what we're seeing for state mandates and needs. And every year, there are additional priorities that sort of insert into there, and we're removing stuff to insert those things in. And then lastly, staff capacity. So over the last three to four years here at the city of McMinnville, the planning and engineering teams have gone through a lot of staff turnover, both in key positions. Our Public Works Director has turned over twice, the City Engineer position as well, and then also in our planning positions. And so based on that, we were making conscientious internal decisions about, "Let's delay this work because it needs, it needs all those key staff in place to participate, and they need time to get familiar with the community to participate in meaningful way. We need to delay these other programs and projects because we don't have enough staff to move them forward."
Don't mind me interrupting real quick just to, in answer, partial answer to councillor Peralta's question. The League of Oregon Cities is currently assessing its potential legislative priorities for the next session. We're part of that process. They've got three legislative, possible legislative priorities that get to some of the issues that Heather was talking about. One is a shelter and homeless response. One is related to employment lands readiness and availability. And one is related to full funding and alignment for housing production. So those are three prospective legislative initiatives that the League will be pursuing in the next legislative session.
So I want to talk about staff capacity a little bit. The work program is ambitious. We're behind. There's a pipeline, clogged pipeline, and we have, quite frankly, state mandates we have to respond to. So we recognize that. And moving forward, we, the expectation that we want to manage with everyone is that we're going to need to be prepared to flex timeframes if necessary where we can. So what that means is if something doesn't have a state-mandated deadline, and when I go through the programs and projects with you, I'll share with you what has state-mandated deadlines. If something doesn't have a state-mandated deadline, and we're in a place again where we don't have staff capacity, we're going to have to again shift. And the stuff that, you know, that doesn't have the deadline will need to shift off a little bit, which is unfortunate because some of that stuff is actually the stuff that I think we should be doing as a community. Both planning and engineering staffing are balancing on a tightrope. So we have a lot of needs, and we're both, both teams are sort of managing those needs at full capacity. And when, you know, when something gets out of balance, it will be an issue. And so with that, we are prepared to utilize funds, to utilize funds, some of the funds for these planning programs to consult with supportive planning and engineering services when the staff does not have the capacity to provide that support. And we'll be working with our engineering team on, on when that is. So let's go into the work program itself. The first program I wanted to visit with you about is the recent state mandates with statutory deadlines. These are the ones that have hard dates written into the legislation and the law. So this isn't something I can change without going through a significant process to change it, though we did change some of these just recently. So I described to you that House Bill 2003 that required us to do a housing capacity analysis by December 31, 2023. We were able to get that deadline extended to February 29, 2024, as we were working through timing issues. And we did that by entering into what's called an approved sequential UGB work plan. So when we submitted the housing needs analysis, we should have submitted how we were going to respond to the need, which also included doing land use efficiencies work and a UGB amendment if necessary. And we quite frankly didn't have the time to do that. So the sequential UGB work plan has been approved by the state and it looks at us doing land use efficiencies by June 30, 2025. And then a UGB amendment by March 1, 2026. We have grants from the state to help us with this work, the land use efficiencies work. And so those grants expire in May as 2025 as well. So those are the balancing acts there. The housing land use efficiencies, what's not included in here is the housing production strategy. So I just realized I got something wrong on my slide. The other thing we need to do is a housing production strategy that needs to be done within a year of the housing capacity analysis. So that is due at the, due by February 29 of 2025, I think. But we, we are working on getting extension through the end of May for that. And land use efficiencies, housing land use efficiencies are part of the housing production strategy. So we will be working through the land use efficiencies as part of that strategy work and then submitting it all to the state.
If it's any stress relief, there won't be a February 29th in 2025, so you should be, you're fine.
Yes, I noticed that in my staff report. I corrected it on my slide, but I was like, wait, that's not in the calendar. So I apologize for that. So this is the bill that's, that sort of put us in the early adopter for that housing capacity analysis. This is, this exhibit is actually in the law, which is interesting to me. And as, we went through this process already, but as you know, there's three steps for growth planning. One's identification of need, land use efficiencies, UGB. We've done the identification of need. That has been challenged. We're working through the challenge right now. And that can get appealed through the process as well, much like our, our McMinnville Growth Management and Urbanization Plan was. And we don't move on to the next step in the work plan. Here's what's interesting in the sequential UGB work plan. We don't move on to the next step until this step is resolved. So that's, that's going to delay everything else. Then the, so we adopted that by ordinance and now we're in the land use efficiencies and UGB alternatives analysis, hopefully. So land use efficiencies, which currently is due in June that we have a grant to help us with, what we, if we can resolve the challenges, what we want to do with the land use efficiencies is look at things like, so we've identified need for housing land and we identified need for employment land, both industrial and commercial. We think there's a way to look at higher density housing in our existing UGB expansion areas to accommodate some of the land use efficiencies and put more housing there. We also think there's, we have a plan with the Innovation Center to do higher density of jobs per acre. So we think we can overcome some of the industrial land need. There's a lot of commercial land need in there. We already have a comprehensive plan policy to rezone 40 acres of industrial land to commercial land. So that will help with that. And we'll continue to work on those reductions. And then just recently, you adopted by resolution, a policy to reduce the level of service for parkland. We want, once, we can use that as a land use efficiency. It has not gone through a land use process and been acknowledged through that process yet. We need to do that first. But we can plan to look at that parkland that's being freed up in the UGB expansion areas for housing as well. So those can all be part of our land use efficiency discussions. And what I just described then puts our parks, the PROS plan into this sort of bucket of plans that we need to get done, bringing it through a land use process so that we can get that acknowledged and use it for the land use efficiencies work for housing. So that's the state mandates work that's in front of us and that's near term. The work I think that's really important and it's also mandated by the state as well, but it doesn't have hard deadlines written into the law. It just says that we need to do it shortly after a UGB amendment, is the, the stuff to finish up our growing McMinnville mindfully program. So we went through the process of establishing a new urban growth boundary in, and that was acknowledged in April of 2021. At the time, we put an urban holding comprehensive plan designation on most of the land in that urban growth boundary amendment because we had, we didn't have time to do the additional planning we needed to do, which is really start looking at assignment of where housing would occur, parks would occur, commercial would occur, those types of things. So we talked about the need to identify our future land supply. This is part of what we adopted in our McMinnville Growth Management Urbanization Plan. Identify the future land supplies, so the urban growth boundary. Then do public facility planning for that new area. So public facility planning is transportation, wastewater, water. How are you going to serve the development there? Update our goal inventories. Our goal inventories are all of our land use goal inventories that are in what we call our comprehensive plan volume one. That's, that shows us what do we have and what do we need? That's the data. Update our policies, which is in comprehensive plan volume two. That's our city policies for what we're doing. And then after we do that, use that information to then do area planning and to amend our zoning ordinance. That was the game plan at the time when we adopted the UGB Growth Boundary Amendment. We even adopted into our comprehensive plan policies to do this work because we needed to, we needed to have assurance that this work was going to be done for the findings for adopting that UGB amendment. And so we have a comprehensive plan policy 12.50 that talks about how we will update this list of plans within five years of a major UGB update. And that addresses consistency with both the urban growth boundary and the Oregon land use goals. So right after submitting our UGB amendment to the state, we started meeting internally as a team just to talk about how are we going to achieve this, this additional work that needs to be done, especially the public facility plans, because those take some time. So we have a wastewater public facility plan, which is divided into two types of planning products, but really operate together in synchronicity. One's the reclamation facility update. That's the treatment plant. And the other one's the conveyance plan. That's the infrastructure system. The transportation system plan, the water master plan. So although McMinnville and Water and Light is a sub-agency of the city, we still have to adopt a water master plan as a city through a comprehensive plan process and get it acknowledged by the state. Our parks, recreation, and open space master plan update, and a stormwater master plan. These were all the plans that we committed to doing. So we met as teams, we signed leads to these in terms of the different departments and who would move things forward. And we put together a game plan as to when they would start. This was back in fiscal year 21, 22, thinking it would either start then or fiscal year 22, 23. And, and then we put together some more concrete deadlines in terms of getting the different products out the door. Shortly after doing this is when we started seeing staff turnover. So obviously not all of these have moved forward as originally planned. The transportation system plan has not moved forward yet. The stormwater master plan has not moved forward either. However, the wastewater plants have both moved forward. The water master plan has both moved, has moved forward. And the parks plan obviously has moved forward as well. So in terms of the different elements that we need to do, this is the list of them since adopting the UGB and where they're at in their process. We also, as part of our UGB work, had done a Goal Five work, which is an inventory of natural resources. And then to respond to that, we had to identify how we were going to protect the ones we wanted to protect. And then a Goal Seven work, which is natural hazards work and how we were protecting people and property. We started that with the UGB amendment. And then due to staff turnover and, and capacity, those got shelved. So they're not done yet and they need to be done as well. So walking through all of this, most of these are moving forward. The hazards plan is about 95% done. You should see that here in March. We're taking that through the Planning Commission right now. And if you look at that work plan sheet I gave you, we plan to come in as a city council work session this fall with that as well. It'll show where we're at. And then the natural resources work, we're going to pick that up again and start moving that through the process and we hope to get it to you by August. What we need to do there is what's called an easy analysis. So we've identified tree groves that we want to protect, riparian corridors, scenic view views. Protecting them means that they're not buildable. And so then we have to go through an analysis as to why that protection is more important to the community than the, the property owner's ability to develop it. And then how to respond to the property owner's ability to develop it. And then the transportation system plan, we hope to start this fall. So the hazard planning, as you know, Oregon land use goal number seven requires cities to do hazard planning. We adopted a action plan for, in the, back with Yamhill County in 2018, the action plan said the city will go forward with this process. When new data was released, new data was released in 2018, and we've been working on this since then. And it comes out of our UGB work. We did all the mapping during that UGB work, if you remember these slides, and started developing overlays to protect people and property. This has got, this is in a public hearing process at the Planning Commission. It's been on pause for a while as we worked through some issues with it. And we're going to bring this back into the Planning Commission this fall to finish it up. The Goal Five Natural Features work was focused on riparian corridors, tree groves, scenic views, and significant trees. We've done all the inventory. We've done all the policymaking in terms of how to score the inventory for what we want to protect. We've developed recommended management and protection programs for it. We've developed a method for determining landmark and significant trees outside of the riparian corridors and tree groves. And now we just need to do that easy analysis that we talked about. So we have done the, the draft mapping, so that volume one stuff, which is inventory and data, and, and developed some suggested policies too. And here's the, I always find the view shed one interesting. The City of McMinnville Transportation System Plan, this is a critical plan. It's really the backbone of trying to get some of that UGB expansion area entitled for development. And unfortunately, this is the one that probably because of planning, staff turnover, and the Public Works Director and City Engineer got put on hold for a while, because it is critical that everyone's able to participate in that. The Transportation System Plan, the components of it is a vehicular system, a bicycle system, a pedestrian system, transit is in there. Our current plan is very heavily focused on vehicular systems. And this next planning effort, I'd like to see us put a lot more effort and discussion into the bike ped infrastructure as well. We do have a good transit master plan that we can bring into this effort. Public engagement will be very critical for this. There's a lot of interest in transportation. It impacts everybody, all the different systems. And then the SDC methodology will be really important too. There's a lot of work that was deferred from the previous transportation system planning process deliberately by policy deferred. But now it means we need to address it. And so that, I think it's going to create a large capital improvement project list. This is expected to take two years. We currently have it costed out at about $450,000 after talking to consultants about it. And it's, it's, the first half of it's currently funded in fiscal year 24, 25. The status of why we're at, where, why we're delayed on this is, as I discussed, we delayed it intentionally due to key staffing vacancies. And then in early, in the spring of 2023, we applied for a transportation growth management grant and learned in the late summer that it was denied. This came to US City Council and was approved by resolution. The reason it got denied was because our transportation model for McMinnville hadn't been updated. So the state runs transportation models that these system plans all are reliant upon, and McMinnville's had not been updated. So we had to work with ODOT and pressure them to get early in the queue to get that updated so we can move this forward. And we've been working with them since January on that update. So Tom's been working with ODOT quite a bit on the data to put into that model, and I think it's nearly done, hopefully. Are there any questions about any of those plans or projects?
Sorry, it just took me a second to unmute. May I ask a question, Mayor?
Please.
Thank you. This may be more granular than you were intending, Heather, but one question that I had after hearing part of the presentation, the, regarding the view shed restrictions, I assume that's essentially, part of that at least, is limiting how much buildings can go up. And I guess my question is, outside of the historic district, what's the policy argument for restricting buildings from getting taller than what, whatever the current limits are?
Yeah. So actually, we did not, we're not recommending that as a policy for this particular analysis. If you look at the slide I have up right now, the recommendation from staff and the consultants is to protect existing view sheds by identifying viewpoints that should be preserved for public access. So it's not a discussion of limiting, capping height for everybody individually to have view sheds, but to look at those places around the city where there are, you know, where there are important view sheds that could be shared by all. So really think of it as sort of that west ridge over there by the west hills. When you get up on that ridge and you look out, you can see the whole city. That's a great viewpoint. How do we preserve that as public access rather than private access? And that's really the, the approach to that.
I, I see. So I had it kind of inverted. You're, you're looking at, at protecting locations where people can have a nice view. And I was thinking you were protecting a view from any point in the city.
Yeah.
So I get it. Yeah, my context for that was the city of Boulder had height restrictions on buildings that were created so that people in any part of the city could view the Flatirons, which is a kind of mountain range right near the town. And I was curious if that was the direction you're going, but it was the opposite. So thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah. And a lot of cities have, have that approach you just described, but we, we were approaching it from a different perspective. Okay, so another priority in this, now we're not in the state mandates, this is where sort of I, as your Community Development Director, am saying, this is where I think the priority should be right now, is on housing. How do we, how do we work towards solving our housing problem in McMinnville and, and stop the trajectory we're under right now? So to me, to stop the trajectory we're under right now, we need to increase supply. Supply is our issue. We have higher demand than supply. We have exponentially rising housing costs. And the best way to do that right now, McMinnville, based on our land constraints, is really looking at those UGB expansion areas and getting them ready for development. I call that sort of setting the table. When we adopted the UGB, we put together an area planning process. If you recall, the city was in a process for many years where to annex into the city, it went to a public vote. And for the public vote, the person who wanted to annex into the city had to show how they were going to develop the property. So people wanted to know exactly what's going to be developed before they agreed to let it into the city, right? So to, the state passed law saying you can't do that. And so after that law was passed, we had a discussion about, okay, how, how do we help the public feel comfortable with what's going to come into the city and be developed? So finding the middle ground there, but not set up to owners a process that you can't actually move forward with development. So that's where we came up with what a lot of other cities are doing, which is an area planning process that happens while it's in the UGB and the county, higher level planning for the property. And then when it comes into the city, the developer needs to master plan and meet that area plan. So it gives the community as a whole some certainty as to the big picture of what's going to develop. And then the developer can come in with their master planning for it. What it does do, it adds a process in terms of planning for this. So we had to, when we adopted the UGB to meet the findings for Oregon land use goals, we had to say, this UGB expansion area is spanning by this much acreage because it's meeting this type of need, housing, parks, commercial, whatever it was. And to ensure that we were setting aside that land to meet that need, we had to adopt what's called a framework plan, which showed where different things were going to conceptually happen. And then also identify exactly the acreage that would, that we would set aside for those different elements. So we adopted that as part of the comprehensive plan. And it summarizes the land needs that are in those UGB expansion areas. Then we divided the UGB expansion areas into six different sub-areas. And those sub-areas are intended to be where we're doing our area planning, in terms of moving things forward. And as you know, and then, and then in the framework plan, we then identified those different land needs and how they were going to drop into those six different sub-areas. So as you know, we did the Fox Ridge Road area. We just got that done. The city committed to doing the area plans. We did set up a process where private, property owners can do area planning as well. And we would sit at the table. It's an expensive process. It takes some time, as you know. We just went through it. It's a Fox Ridge Road. An area plan is anywhere between $250,000 and $350,000. And so we're, you know, you don't see a lot of private property owners taking that on. But we did the Fox Ridge Road area plan. And the next plan that's in the budget and is moving forward is the Southwest area. We have actually added Redmond Hill. We just decided to add the Redmond Hill Road to the Southwest area planning process so that we can cover more land with that process. And we feel comfortable with that because of its adjacencies. And so that's what's going to move forward next. This shows that area that will be part of that. So the Southwest area plan is in, the RFP is in draft form right now. We're going to send it out for internal comments here in the next week or two. And then we hope to get it published in September of this year. And it will be completed by December of 2026. If you recall, the Transportation System Plan is also meant to be completed by December 2026. So hopefully, putting a flag in the sand by December 2026, we'll have had the necessary planning done for this whole Southwest area. planning done for this whole southwest area that that land can all start contemplating development. After we get that planning done, though, so that's still two years away before that land will come, before that land's ready to even contemplate coming into the city, then it needs to annex into the city, be master planned and developed. So, we're probably four, five, six years away from moving dirt in that area.
Can you talk about the prioritization here of, if you go back to that?
Yeah.
Can you talk about how you've prioritized those areas?
Yeah, that's a great question. So, as part of our UGB work, we had to do sort of a public facility analysis, not, not a deep analysis, so it was surface level. But it was looking at our transportation wastewater and water conveyance systems that we currently have, and then how those could serve. If you recall, we had to study all the, all the land within a mile of the existing UGB for new, new UGB opportunities. And so, we did a public facility analysis as to what it, what it would take to serve all that land within a mile. We had, we had like 36 sub-areas, if you remember all that, and, and the cost associated with it to serve them. So, we could get some idea of sort of the fatally flawed areas relative to infrastructure. What that analysis did do for us, though, it showed us what we could serve easily and near term and what would take a little bit longer. So, the priority structure you see here is based on a couple of things. It's based on opportunity to develop in terms of timeliness and readiness. So, the Fox Ridge Road area can, the analysis we did with the UGB work showed we have capacity existing to serve that without significant work down, down the system. And so, we were like, let's move forward with that one first because we can just get that ready to go. The southwest area is probably, is where you see most of the land. It's also where we see most of the opportunity for development because all the other sub-areas, we already know from residents there that they're not interested in moving forward with development or selling their property. And the southwest area, though, has some pretty significant infrastructure lifts to get it ready for development. And so, that's why we prioritize that one second.
And then, Council President asks, is adding Redmond Hill, making that area plan so large, slow down the process? Or what are the pros and cons of grouping that all together?
Oh, great question. I don't think it will slow down the process. The, it will bring more property owners to the mix, so we bring all the property owners together to go through this. But the 2A and 2B, actually, most of that land is owned by one property owner group, one family. And so, we looked at the disparity of property owners by bringing in the Redmond Hill Road, and we thought that that was manageable, bringing those in with that other group because it was so small.
Okay. And then, could you go back to why Riverside is ahead of Booth Bend? Or is it just kind of an underline on what you already said about?
Yeah, so Riverside North is the industrial area, and we are running out of industrial land, so in terms of needs. So, we, that's why that, that is, that's prioritized after the southwest area chunk. Riverside South has more opportunity for housing development. So, if we're just looking at numbers and how the state makes us place housing numbers on these properties, Riverside South can, has capacity for more housing than the Booth Bend Road does.
Thank you.
I don't think it's going to develop in my lifetime here, but we will do the plan. Okay. So, to me, the critical message to you is, we're, we need to set the table. The opportunities are in the Fox Ridge Road area. I feel like we've set the table for that, so that's good. And then, the southwest area, and to set the table there, we're probably two years out before we're done, in terms of, December 2026, hopefully. If we can maintain this, this process and program, hopefully by December 2026, we'll have the planning work done to be able to do that. Now, with that said, these plans don't have state mandates on them. So, these, these, in a priority structure, if we get more state mandates with deadlines, these start shifting further down the chain. Even though this is where I think, if we really want to help solve housing in McMinnville, this is where the effort needs to go. So, now, specialty planning. This is the planning that I think really makes.
Before you go in, I'm sorry, Counselor Peralta has a question.
Yes, thanks, Mayor, and thanks, Heather. I, I, that seemed like a good segue into a question that I had from earlier in the meeting, which is that it seems to me that, speaking generally about legislative mandated reporting, that several of the communities, other communities besides McMinnville are also probably out of compliance with some of those mandates. And so, if we can figure out which cities are in the same boat as us, I, I really do think we should go to the legislature and try and push to either change timelines or reduce the requirements as a group. And that that's something that I mentioned earlier. I think we ought to make that part of our lobbyist's task. Thanks.
Okay, so now, specialty planning. This is, this is the, this is what, to me, is the strategic proactive planning a community does. This is where you really decide, you know, this is what we want for our community, how we want to grow and move forward, and what, what do we want to look like, and how do we interact with our built environment? What are the unique things that we want to do for McMinnville especially? I mean, this is, this is really where the real meat is for planning. And this is the place where, when you're low resourced and have a lot of mandates, typically falls off the radar screen. But I put this image up here because if you don't do this type of planning, you really are, you know, development drives you and you're not driving development in terms of what it looks like and feels like. And what I've heard in this community over the last couple of years, based on some of our built environment, there's frustration there that we haven't been able to strategically manage that as much as we probably want to. So, that, this is where you have design and development standards, where you say sustainable planning is important to us, where you say climate change planning is important to us, and you start putting these things together. And if you don't do it, you're painted into the corner by, by the forces of development, just doing their thing. So, specialty planning, I put the airport master plan in here. It's, I'm not sure it's specialty planning from what I just described, but not every city has an airport. But this is driven by the FFA. And the airport master plan was done in 2004, and it's currently being updated. Willie Williamson is leading that effort, and we expect that to be completed by June of 2025. A lot of that work is done for sort of operations of the airport and how to make sure that the, the infrastructure is there to support the aviation operations, but there is land use aspects to it. We adopt the airport layout plan, and that impacts development around it. And then, we also have an airport zone, and so, that will need to be updated as well. So, at some point in time, this will come to you in a land use process with comprehensive plan policies, maps, and zoning ordinance adoptions. Also in this list is the Innovation Campus, so that's our own policy and where we've, where we've made conscientious decisions that this can be our high-density employment area for sort of our next chapter of employment in McMinnville, and where we can strive to create land where businesses can continue to grow and expand. Our, our economic sector is really built upon the premise that businesses that are started here grow and expand and build their employee base that way. And we want to ensure they have the opportunity to do so in terms of land and also supportive services. And we're also interested in encouraging upward mobility, so getting businesses past sort of what we call the gazelle stage into a more mature stage where we're getting more management pieces in there as well, and then also bringing in knowledge-based jobs to the community, to, to research and development. This, that project is underway right now. The other project that's on this list is a downtown master plan update. There's a lot of dialogue in this community, taking place in lots of different places amongst lots of different groups about downtown issues and, and things that we should be doing. And this is a way to sort of bring all that together thoughtfully and intentionally. And then, the SODAN Intention Level Survey. What this is, is that's a historic preservation program. It's underway right now. That's looking at a potential National Register Residential Historic District in this south neighborhood of downtown. So, the Innovation Campus, I just thought I'd share a little bit more with you about it. The planning effort will include all 200 acres, so it's going to include the commercial retail center here, as well as the Innovation Campus itself, since the two of those work in synchronicity with each other relative to infrastructure, and they're, have the same property ownership group. We really see this as our next-generation employment, and it's nestled between the hospital and the airport. The components of the planning will be doing master plans first, so working with the property owners and the community on three different master plans. A low development scenario, medium development scenario, and high-density development scenario. And then, choosing a preferred one. And again, this is for both commercial and the Innovation Campus. And then, based on the preferred land use plan, doing a public infrastructure analysis. So, what do we need to serve that? What is it going to take in terms of capital improvement projects? How are we going to fund them, those types of things? Then, putting together an overlay for that area, which will include design and development standards. So, if you recall, when we went through the three-mile lane area planning process, there was a lot of concern about what will this look like and how will, will it reflect on McMinnville? And so, that, we see that as being a critical step. And then, marketing for this. So, we were able to get a grant from Business Oregon to put together a marketing program for the Innovation Campus itself. And so, this project is funded entirely by ARPA and grant funds, and it's being led by Jody Christensen, and, and the consultant team is on board. And we, I think we have our first project advisory committee coming up soon. Jeff is helping us with it, sitting on our project management. The downtown master plan update is planned for the next two years, and it's really bringing together all of those discussions that's underway so that the future vision for downtown is both thoughtful and intentional, and how do you weave all those discussions together in such a way that reflects what the community wants to see. I have a couple of slides for this because I just think it's interesting that downtown has always been planned since the beginning and is part of the core of, of McMinnville. But we're, what we're doing is we're updating the 2000 Downtown Improvement Plan. That's the last plan that was, that was adopted for McMinnville in terms of the downtown. That plan, plus the Northeast Gateway Plan that was adopted in 2012, informed the Urban Renewal Plan in 2013. So, those two plans both had projects and programs in them that had funding needs, and the city put together an urban renewal plan to fund those. Since then, we've done a historic preservation plan, which has a lot of recommendations for the downtown in terms of the historic district downtown. We've done a wayfinding plan for the downtown area, the urban renewal area, as well as the city as a whole. That did not move forward. It got shelved due to a lack of funding, and also, at the end, people felt it needed a little bit more design refinement. We've also done our parking management plan, which has an action plan in it for the downtown area. We've done a city center housing strategy to look at where housing can occur. I was sharing with the Economic Vitality Leadership Council the other day when we were walking through this. I haven't seen new housing starts in the city center here in McMinnville in eight years. I mean, there's been one or two, but nothing significant. And in a community that has pressure on housing, that's interesting. And we've done a housing strategy. It showed, you know, that we, that we have gap funding needs to develop housing in the downtown and incentivize it. And so, this has an action plan in it that we need to figure out how to move forward. Another discussion that's been underway for a while is the city and county both have a lot of land ownership in the downtown area. City's blue, county's red on this map, purple is nonprofit. So, that's a lot of tax-exempt property in our urban renewal area. It's also a lot of disparate facilities for both public agencies, and I know both public agencies have had discussions and/or studies about that and what's the best plans for moving forward. Based on those planning efforts, there will be impact downtown, and, and so, making sure that that impact is opportunistic. We've had a lot of discussion about the downtown design standards and guidelines and whether they're serving McMinnville the way we want them to serve McMinnville moving forward. And so, that's come up a lot, and this downtown master plan update can work towards, can have, lead the community discussion as to what do we want to see there. We've talked a lot about the need to connect the city center into the, across the couplet into the city park and the library. It once was very important piece of the downtown area. It's become somewhat disconnected. How do we make those connections again into that area? And then, with the discussion of the community center relocating out of the downtown and some of the county discussions about their facilities, this area itself will have a lot of change in the next couple of years. And how do we look at this area so that the change is going in the direction that we want to see it go, to serve the community? We've talked a lot about connecting the Third Street and Alpine Avenue. Now that Alpine Avenue is starting to see a lot of synergy and private, a lot more business development that is pedestrian-oriented. And then, interesting to me is the Northeast Gateway District has a lot of properties that have storage facilities on them, so either yard facilities or mini-storage. And there's interest in redeveloping those, but it's not clear to me what the tools are that we're going to use to redevelop, though. So, having, looking at that a little bit more, with more, deeper lens in terms of how do we move that forward. And lastly, thinking beyond just Third Street as the downtown area, the McMinnville Urban Renewal Advisory Committee is leading this effort, and they've had a lot of discussion about, let's start studying areas outside of just Northeast Gateway District and Third Street and see if there's other areas we should bring into this comprehensive planning process as the city grows. Where are housing opportunities? Where are other business development opportunities? So, this has six study areas that's been developed for this. This is a plan that's been in the MIRAC Strategic Plan for many years. It has not moved forward due to staff capacity, but we feel now we can move this forward, and it's scheduled to start here in late 2024. The logistics for this is we expect it to take two years. We want to launch it in October. Taylor's going to help with this project. We expect the cost to be estimating right now, three to 350. Not quite sure where it's going to go. It could lead to an urban renewal plan update, which may add cost to this. It is meant to be funded by the Urban Renewal Agency, and the MEVLC will be helping with it. It meets many of your MacTown 2032 goals. All these planning projects meet many of your MacTown 2032 goals. Some of the planning projects are actual strategic items in your, in your adopted goal document. So, that's the specialty planning. The last pieces I wanted to talk to you about is code amendments that are required either by state law or have been directed by the Planning Commission and/or City Council. We have landscape amendments, so much like we had the discussion about street trees and efficiencies and cost to the city, the landscape, our landscape program is in sort of the same boat. It seems onerous to manage, and it's costly, and so, we're working on streamlining that and making it more clear and objective. We started this effort back in 2018. It has bounced around because of priorities, and we're hoping to get this completed here soon. This is Taylor's project he's working on right now. We have worked with the Affordable Housing Committee on a small lot subdivision code to bring in a different type of housing product that can help with homeownership for lower income, and we're hoping to bring that in as code amendments here by the end of this calendar year. Transitional housing is underway, and tomorrow night, Planning Commission is going to see this for the first time, and we have a work session with you set up sometime in the fall to look at this as well. And we hope to get that completed by January. And then, Senate Bill 458 is a Senate bill that passed probably three years ago. It's a bill that, that allows for missing middle housing to be subdivided into independent parcels, even if it's non-conforming with the underlying zone. So, what that means is if someone builds, so for instance, we're actually in dialogue about this right now. If someone builds a cottage cluster, like Brian Rudin has built over by Michael Book, and there's eight cottages on it, it's on one parcel. When he, when he planned it and brought it in, it was approved, this law was not in place. So, he couldn't subdivide it. He couldn't create eight small lots there because it wouldn't met, it wouldn't have met the underlying zone, which is R1, which is a large lot zone. But with this, when this bill passed, it said, cities must allow land division of this missing middle housing product, even if it's non-conforming to that underlying zone. So, those eight cottages can become eight independent. So those eight cottages can become eight independent lots. There's other more complicated things involved in terms of how do you serve it, and, and we're working through those issues at the city right now with something that's already been built. But we have to, what we have to do is, and Brian's project has illuminated this for me because I, you know, set it aside for a while, this Senate bill, we have to bring this into our code so that we can understand what does this mean for McMinnville, meet the state mandate, and are there other things we want to add or subtract from that state? We can't subtract anything from a state mandate, but are there other things we want to put in play with this missing middle housing land division? And many other cities have already done this. So we're going to start this next spring and try to conclude it by the end of next year. And then there's the City Council Priority, which is the Time, Manner, and Place Code for downtown and for businesses only selling alcohol. Right now, that's under legal review as to whether we can legally do that in the state of Oregon in a land use process and what that would look like. And so David is still working through that with State Attorneys Association and our legal counsel, contracted counsel. So with that, are there any questions? I wanted to share with you the, the green plan I showed you that had the three-year plan on it. If you think about sort of the specialty planning that always gets shelved and pushed to the side, that's what you're going to see in the bucket under 2026 and 2027. And it just keeps moving, but we do keep it on our list.
You can, we, and the screen share will be easier to monitor the chat. Thank you. Thank you for, thank you. Thank you for all of this information. Just, let's open this up to members of the council for questions.
The only comment I'd like to say is thank you for all the work that you're doing. Thank you for this presentation. As usual, it's very in-depth and covers virtually everything I could come up with. And I would, I guess I do have one question. Is it possible to get the slide presentation for this emailed out?
Yes. Daniel asked me for it earlier, and I was working on it up till 5:45.
Yeah, we all want it.
So that'd be my one question, but I do appreciate the, the various things that I see that you guys are doing, and I appreciate the update, letting us know where we're at with this stuff. Questions that I've had for a long time, why doesn't some stuff get moved? This answers. So I, I appreciate that greatly. Thank you.
I have a question from Counselor Gary. What should we expect as the lag time between area master plan and housing?
Well, that's a good question. I can only share with you my experience in Redmond in terms of lag time. And again, that's a different team, different resources, and different foundational planning, so take that all with a grain of salt. But typically, we would see, after we had the area plan done and a property owner was interested in annexing into the city, the master planning effort and the annexation effort would probably take about a year concurrently with each other. And then the, the planning effort is all bundled in with the master plan. So someone can come in and do their master planning and get planning approval all the way down to a tentative subdivision, and so they'll have all the planning approval they need to move forward and start plating. The plating work typically takes about a year to work through design, working with the engineering team on the design, potentially moving some dirt towards the end of that year. So I, I bet you're looking at two, two to three years. You think that's right, Jeff?
Yeah.
Two's pretty ambitious, especially for bigger projects.
I have a question from Counselor Payne. I have a comment. Thank you for the information and significant work the Community Development Center has put into this, and I appreciate the update on establishing time, place, and manner on alcohol sales. And Counselor Gary says, very good.
Okay, thank you. And Counselor Payne is right. It is the Community Development Center that does this work. It's the, it's the teams across the board of engineering, building, and planning that are all involved in the development work around here in McMinnville, as well as other teams at the city.
Yeah, I'd just like to say how much I really appreciate this. And I'm sure Jeff appreciates it too because I ask him, well, what's coming up next and whenever it's going to happen? So this is very clarifying, and I know a tremendous amount of work from everyone's point of view.
Counselor Gary says, what has been the state's response to cities with unmet deadlines for planning projects?
Yeah, so to think of that in two different ways. One would be, we have Oregon land use goals that tell us when we should be doing stuff and the, the order in which we should be doing them and the timeliness in which we should be doing them. So that's sort of the larger piece of when you do UGB amendment, you then do public facility planning. It should be done, you know, reasonably within the same timeframe as the UGB amendment. I'm, we used to, the state used to put us into periodic review, which means we had work tasks and deadlines associated with those work tasks, which would line all that stuff up, and you had to meet the deadlines. I'm, I'm much, I never worked on one where we didn't meet the deadline, so I don't know what happens if you don't. But we no longer have periodic review. Those deadlines don't exist for that, those elements, except for us. Now we have deadlines that are embedded in the state law itself, like we had with the housing capacity analysis, where it's the language of the bill. And, and so to not meet that deadline, I'm not sure what will happen for that, to be honest with you. I can tell you, since we, since we have gotten the challenges on the needs analysis, I asked the question, if we can't move forward to the next step as we're working through this, and with McMinnville's history, working through this could take some time, what happens? Because we won't meet deadlines. And so we do have emergency meetings set up for July 25th to discuss it. That's what I know. The state is putting together, I don't know how much money they're investing in this, I can't recall, but a Housing Production Accountability Office. I've told you about that. It will sit in the Department of Land Conservation and Development. That's the planning agency, and it is for cities. It's to hold cities accountable.
And I, I don't think that they've started hiring for that yet.
No, I think they have like, actually, I don't remember the number of positions, but it will take a while to prop that up. Yeah, I was going to say it was 20, so it is a big number.
Counselor Peralta says, thank you for all of the work. And Council President says, thank you for the holistic overview of the path and vision ahead of us. It's nice to have, it, it would be nice to have less state mandates and more flexibility for local prioritization, but I get that out of our staff's hands. If that comes up with the COG or LOC, I'd get behind supporting any change in that direction at the state level. And so I think that's reflective of Counselor Peralta's comments earlier of pursuing lobbying efforts about state mandates. And, and then, of course, Counselor Peralta serves with the COG as well. And is speaking, has a speaking engagement coming up as well. Counselor Gary says, interesting. Thank you. And Counselor Peralta will bring it up at our next COG meeting. This is a new part of the job. I, I just also want to note that you talked about staffing shortages, but I think, you know, you, you talked about them generally, and I, and I think it's good that we keep being specific in how severe our staffing shortages have been because in addition to the turnover, you know, through the pandemic, we operated with two people in planning. The national standard is one planner per 5,000 population, which means fully staffed, we should have seven people in planning. And even with the addition of, with the position we just funded, that still doesn't bring you up to, to seven, does it? Or does it?
No. And I, I tried to provide that for you in the staff report. I think, I think it brings us, us up to six in full numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, 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 you know, we operated at lesser FTEs than historically have been at the city for planning back in the early 2000s. I would also say engineering's in the same boat that planning's in, in that regard.
Well, thank you for doing all the extra heavy lifting that it takes when you don't have a, a fully staffed team or, or department. We know that that, it doesn't mean the workload lessens. So thank you for picking up all of those pieces, the puzzle pieces you showed us on the first slide there. Thanks for picking them up and putting them together. Unless there's any additional questions or comments, I am going to close the work session at 7:20 PM. Thank you so much.
Recording stopped.